You're distracting me. Hello, everybody. Welcome. This is January. State of Bethel Commission Meeting. I'm Catherine Heber. I'm the chairman. The first order on the agenda is pledge allegiance to the flag, which is over here. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
Indivisible.
Hi, Peter.
Hello.
Good to have you. Okay, so are there any public comments? Or first, before that, was there any correspondence? Are there any public comments? Yes, can you please?
Yes.
Can you know?
19 Algen Avenue.
So, this is interesting. You know, I think, I know Billy and I think about sustainability a lot. Because, you know, we have differing views. But this is really interesting because we are aware of this group, and you probably are too, called Desegregate Connecticut. And they're very focused on transit-oriented districts and building multi-use complexes. To make it more, I guess, navigable towns. And they came out in their newsletter today, and it's called EVs are not TODs. So while the Lamont administration has just announced a $14 million grant from the Department of Transportation to develop EV charging stations, they are saying that's not transit-oriented. It's like, why don't you just invest in gas stations? So the sustainables are warming with the other sustainable factions now in sustainability. So I found that quite concerning. Because everyone is very zealous about their particular thing. They feel really strongly about this. We've seen hearings. I've spoken at hearings. And they really are all, and I know that your commission also is exploring walkability and things like that. But at the same time, we're going to be investing in charging stations for cars where the batteries freeze up in the cold weather. And people have to push them around. Now, I know that's not driving.
Yeah, I'll leave like that.
Right. So anyway, I just think it's, I think this is holistically what I think, and I'm really serious. I think that we are, we focus on these little kind of, I don't want to say trendy, but almost like little, oh, let's have, you know, food scraps. No, no offense to me. The food scraps. Oh, let's have the charging. Oh, let's do the walkability. When people are literally dying and homeless and poor, and it's like the whole world's gone amok. But we're just, it's like we're focusing on these things that it's not really made in the long run, but no one's thinking about the short run. So it's just concerning. Thank you for letting me share. Thank you, Cynthia. Anybody else?
Billy Michael, 27 and a half, Lea River Avenue. Every month I come here and I reiterate my, my acquisition to an equity coach. I just want that in the public record every month that somebody said they are against a town equity coach. Unless you make it a, an elective position. If we're an elective position, I'd love to see that. People buy it for, I want to be the equity coach. Imagine the campaign promises. So, here's the thing. Cynthia's talking about this. You've seen the news. Because I know this commission is very in touch with this electric vehicle stuff. I mean, they're all freezing up in Illinois. People are waiting hours, days to get their cars charged. And as I opened up my electric bill from EverSource, Elevate Your Energy Goals for the New Year. It says, Charge Into the Future With An Electric Vehicle. Their charging station rebates, all of this money coming from Benwell. You have grants, we have grants for compost, grants for, I just think this is impoverishing the country. And to buying things that we don't want. And your commission likes this stuff. I think you bought into things for people that people really don't want. Or they pay for them without all the government subsidy, forcing their neighbor to pay for that which they want. So I mean, that's my, my monthly tirade, but I've got some interesting news. Of course, I spoke with Tiffany, and she's going to make me an expert in the costs of this food scrap waste program. Because when you, like every government program, when you see the net, what you get and what you're really paying. Like, I want to know what it costs for those plastic jugs. I want to know who made the money on those jugs. Because these are all the invisible underground costs that never get explained to the public. And my cousin is an avid gardener. And she probably takes, maybe with this, half as much if that would fill that. She takes a food blender, makes it into a slurpee, and she pours it in her garden. And I'm thinking, my God, people can do this with a food blender. They can rid themselves of organic food scraps and turn it into a milkshake for their garden. But the government can't do that because the government can't make any money telling people, use a clothesline. The government doesn't make any money when it says, wind power, sun, solar, solar and wind, use a clothesline. Like your commission should say, let's be a town that jumps off the electric and gets clothes dryers and dries their clothes by air and sun. But there's no money to be made. So I think we should be pushing food blenders to make slurpee instead of this. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And ask a question, who pays for?
No, 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 no.
No output, just no.
Only input at this, on this agenda item, no output. Thank you, Billy. I'm following the rules. I know, otherwise Cynthia won't kind of say, no, you're not following the order, point of order. Anybody else would like to say anything in the public? No? Okay, great. So I'm going to quickly go through my chairman's report, and then we're going to hand it over to Tiffany. So, Happy New Year to everybody. Happy New Year to all of you up there on the screen. And welcome to new members, Kelly Codarasi. Hello, Kelly. She unfortunately has not been sworn in yet because she had COVID. I'm glad you're feeling a little better. And also Dana DeZerou. So these are our two new commissioners. Welcome, welcome. We will eventually, we have right now nine commissioners, eight commissioners. We are eventually, there is one vacancy, so we will have nine. And Dan, of course, has been very diligent and working on that, very much appreciated. Appreciate that he has done that. The other that I just wanted to mention to you was talking about our, we have a roadmap that we've been using related to the Sustainable Connecticut certification. And that's great. But since we're in a new year, we have new opportunities. And it's kind of like, I always look at New Year's as a, not only a new opportunity, but blank slate. So I kind of want to drill that down into major categories because now we are almost a full commission. So we're getting involved with a lot with the selectmen's office, with the town. And I'd like to align our strategic plan for this year more on how it's presented and communicated on the website. So there are six major focus items on the website, and those tie into the certification. We're going to still keep the roadmap for the certification because that is, we need that too. That's very helpful, our guide to get the certification this year. So the six focus areas are environmental preservation, which we're already working on with several of our projects. Managing waste and recycling, which Tiffany is going to talk about. Diverting waste from our waste stream and recycling food scraps. There's a whole bunch of other things that we can be doing as a town. Also, energy, so I'm sorry, tourism. So tourism, yeah, somebody said to me, well, Bethel's so small. And there's no hotel or whatever. I said, no, there's a lot going on. We're a growing community. Yes, we want balanced growth. We want economic development. At the same time, we want community development. We want to make sure that we address the needs of the community. But the tourism is important. I mean, that goes to our arts, our culture, our historic assets. So that's an important component of sustainability as well. Energy consumption and efficiencies. How do we reduce our energy for not only our public buildings, but to help our residents? And we already have a solar farm that helps to do that with, I believe, there's three buildings. And how do we continue to expand that, those initiatives? Housing. Yeah, that is really important. I know another trigger word aside from equity is affordable housing. Affordable housing, people define that in different ways. But I always use my story about my daughter and her boyfriend who live in Vermont. They both grew up here in Bethel since they're two. And they're living in Vermont because they really can't afford to live here. They both work there, obviously. But I use that as a story because we want them here, obviously. If they get married and have kids, that's a big thing for us. But so that's where they are right now. But so it's not, it's affordable housing is, it's for, it's young people. It's senior, how do we keep our senior citizens here? How do we look at the different demographics and help them to continue to live in our community? So it's a live, work, play type of thought process. And of course, very near and dear to my heart is all about transportation. So in that transportation, it's yes, parking and also mobility. So how to, thinking about safe, accessible, affordable, inconvenient mobility for all, which includes pedestrian, biking, microtransit, transit, the railroad station, and cars, of course. So that's, so I want to be able to put that in some type of, something that I can share with all of you. And you can all comment on it, and we can work from there. The other thing that I'd like to focus on this year, which is really important, now that we're going to have a full complement of working volunteers. And I'm sure there will be others that want to help us out, are the deadlines. So we have events that are planned, and I know Katie and Gabrielle will be talking about Earth Day. That's April 20th, I believe, and the walk audit, I believe, is May 18th. But also the certification, the Sustainable Connecticut Certification Deadline for Submitting Our Application is in the middle of August. So we can talk about that later in the agenda. See if there's anything else that I have to just bring up to you. Let's see, before we get into all the other stuff. Nope, that's kind of it. I don't want to, you know, it's, okay. That's it for now. I really want, any questions? Nope. Okay, good. All right. So, oh, yes, ma'am. For the Argosustainable CT Deadline, are we aiming to have absolutely everything complete? Or? That's the deadline to get, to actually get the certification in the fall. So yeah, so a short answer, so we can talk about that during your planning committee, but yeah, agenda item. But yeah, that would be something, a goal. So, yeah. Okay. So I want to introduce our special guest. Tiffany Carlson is a Pousatonic Resource Recovery Authority Project Manager. She's here to talk about how we can all participate more in our food scrap program. And trash talk in general, right? I mean, did you want to?
Very, very lightly, very lightly.
Okay, so you have the floor, and she brought some great marketing materials and information and some actual buckets.
Very lovely. Thank you for the, I'll just sit and let you want me to stand.
No, whatever you're comfortable with.
Okay. And being respectful of the time allotment.
So, you know, I'm just wondering, because they can't see you. The camera's right here.
Can you please ask, would you please speak up a little bit? That would be great.
Better if I stand here.
Fantastic.
Now that, now that.
I was behind the camera.
Now that we're getting comfortable with this room and knowing where the camera is. Okay, good.
Well, thank you very much for sharing your precious meeting time with me. Again, my name is Tiffany Carlson. I'm a project manager that was hired by HRA to assist the town of Bethel with executing their Sustainable Materials Management Pilot Grant. It's a big mouthful, but they make us put that on all the paperwork. You can ask Kathy Galvis about that. Many of you are aware that Connecticut is in a waste crisis that's been exacerbated by the closing of the Mira Waste-to-Energy Plant in 2022. Households in our state currently generate 3.5 million tons of household garbage. We now only have a capacity to manage 2.7 million tons. That leaves an excess of 800,000 tons. What do we do with that? Connecticut Deep has been searching for answers for ways to reduce household waste. They issued 15 grants, and Bethel raised their hand and said, we'll try, we'll give it a go. You already have an excellent program at your transfer station with the different materials that are afforded to households if they don't wish to use curbside service or they wish to enhance what they're able to put in their curbside service. So kudos to you for that. Currently, that 800,000 tons is trucked or railed out of state. And more often than not, gets put into a landfill. Which, while I'm not a fan of either waste to energy or landfills, the methane that's produced when organic material goes into a landfill is tremendous. They'll argue as to whether it's 28 times more deadly than carbon dioxide or 80 times more deadly. So Bethel did step up to help find a solution. They accepted the grant from Connecticut Deep. They based our plan on knowing that the average household has 22% organic food scraps waste in their household garbage. Normally, the organics altogether, that includes paper and wood and other types of organic material, is 33%. So if we could get that 22% food scraps out, that would be a big way to kind of try to impact that number, that overage that we're not able to handle ourselves here in Connecticut. So how many of you have a transfer station permit? One, two. How many of you use the transfer station? Three, four. Okay. And do you regularly use it?
Okay, yeah, don't, yeah. Now more.
Now more because that's, most of your permittee, you have a lot of permittees. But they, because it's such a bargain, because you don't charge a fee for your permit, I think they get their permits with the intent of, well, if I have something big that I have to dispose of, I can't put it in my curbside pickup. So they'll use the transfer station to take care of that. A lot of people are using it to recycle. They aren't necessarily, they're still having curbside pickup of their materials, but they're not necessarily relying on the curbside service of recyclable pickup. So we came up with this program called Save As You Throw, Take The Challenge. So we're asking people who normally bring their MSW, their regular household garbage, if they would try to remove their food scraps from that garbage. So I agree with Billy in that it is best. It is the lowest carbon footprint, the least amount of energy expended to compost in your backyard. But you have residents in Bethel that don't have a yard to compost it. So this is an enhancement. This is an additional service that the town is able to offer residents who maybe live in multi-unit housing or, or, you know, don't have the land space to have a compost area. So we decided for this 12 months with this grant money, we're going to see if we can come up with a way to continue offering food scraps recycling after the grant money goes away, that it doesn't put a burden on the taxpayers. Will it cost anything? At this point, we don't know. What we do know, what we are grabbing, is the data. Are Bethel residents who use the transfer station willing to participate in a food scraps drop-off program? Can they get past, if you've never composted before and you're starting it for the first time, there, you know, are some hurdles. Some people have a hard time getting past the yuck factor if they hang on to those food scraps for too long and they start to liquidate and the mold comes, particularly in the summer. What do I do with them? Where do I keep them? Where do I store them? So these are all pieces of the program that we're trying to educate the Bethel residents. So what do I do? Where do I keep my food scraps? How do I collect it? These containers are sold in other food scraps programs for $20. They are not required to participate in the program. You can use your own containers. Other towns, some of them give them away for free. Right now, during our pilot, Bethel is doing that. Other towns charge $20. So it's up to you and how you configure the program if this becomes a revenue stream to offset the cost of the transportation. And that's the biggest expense part of any food scraps program if you're not going to compost it municipally. And I know that First Selectman Carter is already two steps ahead of us. He's looking at wanting to set up a municipal compost pile right in Bethel so that there would be no transportation cost at that point. So what else can I tell you? The fee for waste disposal has remained the same at 25 cents a pound. We know that the average American, numerous, numerous studies, produces 4.9 pounds of garbage every single day. So you can see where that starts to add up. And when you aggregate residents, a lot, that number gets a lot higher. Bethel has approximately 7,200 households and an average of 2.8 persons per household. So the opportunity to really make this program a true test as to whether we can first get the waste, the food, organic waste out of the trash, and then can we turn that into compost. Part of the pilot is that material is being taken to New Milford Farms. It is being composted. It's not going to the Quantum Bio. It's not finding its way back into the waste stream. It is being composted. So the reason I'm before you this evening is that I need your help as the Sustainable Bethel Commission to expand the awareness, the public education about our program. We've generated flyers and trifolds and yard signs, and we've tabled at events, where I met you. We're at the transfer station, talking to residents who participate. We have just shy of 200 households that are participating. We're averaging about 30 drops per week. Regardless of the weight of the food scraps, it's a $1 flat fee right now during the pilot. And that was to see if we could offset the cost of what the hauling is costing. And right now, that's $180 a month for once-a-week pickup. So if I can get you just to be talking about this, that would be very helpful. I put many of these out around your businesses on Main Street. I don't know if they're still up. But if you would be willing, the next time you go to have a cup of coffee, if the community board has this up, please put it up. We also did a survey of the participants in the program. And without fail, the response was overwhelmingly positive. It was really good to hear the questions that some of them had, and mostly that centered around, what do I do about when I start to go bad or I start to see mold or that type of thing? We are in, able to respond to any resident questions within 24 hours. We've also the point for any, again, questions, comments, concerns. They've got access on all of the literature is the way to get to someone who knows the information and can address that question. So we can, right now, if we can take that 170 participants and make it 300, based on what is going on now, we could probably cover the cost in the pilot of the transportation. So then that's a data point that we look at. So if we take our participation from 300 to half of the transfer station permittees, what sort of cost could we incur in transportation if we don't build the municipal pile? And we do have to pay for it. How can we negotiate with the hauler on his cost? At one point, it was discussed that the material might be taken to Ridgefield. The town of Ridgefield does have a municipal pile. They have agreed to accept material, food scraps from sister towns. So that's another option for us. So what we're building during this pilot, and I really sincerely hope that you will engage with this because we need that, we need that other viewpoint. We need that, well, hey, have you thought of? Who's making money on this type of questioning on all of that stuff? Is to gather that all up during the pilot, and then a decision will be made. Do we go forward with this? And you will play a large part in that, I would assume. First Selectman Carter will ask for your recommendations. We're seeking feedback from the public as to what they want. Is this an option? Is this a good way to offer people who can't backyard compost to take their food scraps out of their garbage? Is this a way for people to take food scraps out of their curbside pickup? So then maybe their curbside pickup isn't as voluminous, and they don't have to have it picked up weekly. Maybe they could go to twice, you know, twice a month or once a month. The last thing is, is I noticed you guys are eager for your Sustainable CT certification. This would absolutely qualify under Section 9-4, Reduce and Compost Organic Waste. If you would like assistance with the write-up for that, I'd be happy to do it. I've done that for the town of Ridgefield. And also for holding a sustainability event, all of the times we've gone out into the public and spoken or made presentations, made trash talks would count as a sustainability event under 8.1. And I would be happy to provide you the flyers and the promotional. So may I ask if there's questions among the commissioners or?
I just wanted to extend, and hopefully everybody agrees. An invitation for you to come out for Earth Day and have your trash talk set up there. And on May 18th as well, the walk audit, we're going to have a little sign-in area that can come and.
I would love to participate. I would love to, depending on the dates. Because I do have things in Ridgefield that I'm promoting around Earth, as you can imagine. And we also found out it's our 50th anniversary of our recycling center. So really, we're going to pull out all the carpets, but, yeah. So thank you for giving me this time. Thank you, Catherine, for getting me on the agenda. And is it all right if I remain for the rest of the?
Yeah, remain, but I just want to, I want to say that Tiffany and I met, I think it was last week, right? Yeah, it was over the weekend. They're all coming together. Everything's kind of gelling together. And one of the thoughts I had was, I introduced her to the library. Because the library has programming in Bethel, because libraries have become more like community centers. And they were very interested in having Tiffany come and do the trash talk about what it means to divert waste from the waste stream. So we'll be setting that up. I also spoke to the Bethel Chamber of Commerce and going to invite her to one of their networking events to have a, you know, a short conversation with the business community as well. About 50% or maybe 60% of the small businesses in Bethel actually live here. So it would not only be an impact to their business, but to their own personal as a resident. And then there's other ways to get awareness out through social media, et cetera.
That's great. I have to tell you, your First Selectman's Weekly Letter, we get that feedback, that people see it in his newsletter. So he's been a great help in getting the word out and awareness about it. And Pete and Todd at the transfer station are excellent because there's nothing that beats that face-to-face communication with someone. Well, I'm not so sure. Okay, well, here's, here's where you can go to get more information. You know, let us know what your questions are. So they're doing a great job.
Oh, yeah.
So, thank you.
Thank you. Are there, are there any questions from? No, Kelly, you're not sworn in yet. I can't have, I can't have you, I'm sorry. Peter Ortia, any questions?
No.
Any questions from you?
I actually have one.
Okay.
So this is new to me. Is it just food scraps or all organics?
There's a list of items that are accepted. It's predominantly food scraps. The thing that makes this a good supplement to people who backyard compost is that it accepts meat, bones, dairy, shells. Pet waste is not compostable. That shouldn't even go to a commercial composter because the pathogens in it are just too much of a risk.
No questions? All right. Thank you so much. We'll definitely be in touch. Yes.
That was perfect. Oh, my gosh.
Okay, so next on the agenda is consideration of approval for the December 20th, 23 minutes. For those of you that were here, do I have a motion? Do I have a second? All in favor? I?
And I abstain because I was not here.
Okay.
My go was Peter.
Okay, so.
Right. I abstain.
Okay. Okay, so. Okay, so planning committee, we have um. Uh, go ahead, Tia, and then we can have Gabriela talk about um, the walk audit.
Sure, um. We have um, our meeting is going to be um, our first meeting of twenty twenty four is going to be January twenty third. It'll be from nine thirty to, I'm I'm scheduling it for two hours. Not that I think it'll necessarily go that long, but. But I've scheduled it for that length of time. It will be in meeting room A. I'll get the um, minutes from our last meeting out in our agenda um, as soon as I get the stamped copy back from Lisa Burke. Um, but mostly we'll be talking about um, our progress on. Our certification and deadlines and that kind of thing, as well as talking about the walk audit and um. Probably a little bit about Earth Day as well. So that's really it. That's really it for me.
Um, so just let me uh, pipe in a little bit. I have invited Kelly and I don't know if I since, no, I I don't think I um, um, communicated that to you. Because I do want um, both Kelly and Dana to be involved with the certification process so they're aware of what's going on. Oh, Peter's in the waiting room.
Sorry.
That's okay. You can hear him for that. Um, so I I'll get you wrapped up. Maybe that's you understand what's going on. And hopefully Kelly, you'll be sworn in by then. Yes, all right. Um, okay, Gabriela, walk audit.
So walk audit, May eighteenth, um, so far, we had. Basically just a preliminary preliminary. Sort of wrapping our minds around the entire planning of it and. We will be creating like a one pager just explaining what's going on. Attach it to the audit tool itself and start interacting, contacting uh. The different businesses and organizations that are around there as well as sending out a save the day and things like that. Um, so that we can get volunteers uh, to help out and come out and do the audit itself. Um, somebody is going to also do a bike audit since they are. Rebecca's gonna do that. Um, she's really into biking and everything, so that will be a great additional perspective. And then. Yeah, just uh, we talked about um, potentially having like a. A table where people come sort of check in, pick up the materials and either. Go to their designated site that they're interested in documenting or sort of start a whole walk along route depending on what. Their interests are. Um, and you know, we're just trying to get different perspectives from. People that ride bus, people that are walking in and out of those businesses, people that work in the different um. Organizations that are around there, families, strollers, people with walking disabilities, wheelchair, as many of people that we can try to get. Um, and different perspectives so that we collect their their information and. Ultimately make a recommendation for the town to, for them to understand where and what could be done. To improve safety for pedestrians. Um, and just accessibility and use all around in that area. Uh, one of the things that. We touched a little bit upon that Kelly can fill us in later is. I meant to start saying, um, a drop off, a pickup point. So that could be the agricultural center. Since it's sort of like in the middle of the whole situation in that Route six corridor. Um, so she's going to talk to them about potentially having some space there that day so that people can check in and check out. Um, and you know, with a little bit more safety than sort of just trying to be in parking lot or something. Um, so that is where we are right now. And hopefully we'll have more of an update later on with people sort of citing on and getting involved. But that's where we are in terms of planning.
So it it it, so to get the word out to the different groups to cover that, you know, the different demographics, is it gonna, how are you doing?
Uh, when with the sort of one pager packet that uh, we put together. We're going to start talking to people, calling people, uh, different contacts. We have a couple here and there. Um. One of my ideas and hopefully it can come to fruition is connecting with Beyond Abilities.
Yep.
And having them do the walk audit from their building to. Sort of the main road and how that connects the different, um, just so that that perspective is captured. Um, so reaching out to them, I think, I know somebody that volunteers a lot there, so it would be.
Right, and we and and Dan will put it in his weekly newsletter and we can also digitally post on. Patch and um, oh, yeah, on on all the Bethel sites and all that kind of stuff. So that's easy to get the word out that way. We'll, you know. We'll share it with our groups that we know in Bethel as well, all of us.
So, yeah, yeah, one of the things I actually. Talked to Dan about was getting it in the newsletter and potentially putting it on the website calendar. So that it is in. The town calendar. It can easily be clicked on and you know.
Oh, yeah.
How all that, so for sure. All of that stuff, but.
So you you and Kelly, me on a reg, we'll be meeting on a regular basis and then you'll let us know. Okay.
Yes.
All right. Do you have any questions?
Anything else that I forgot? Or maybe she's not allowed to say it, but.
No, she can't.
Okay, never mind.
Sorry. Until next time. Until next time, um. Under the planning committee, because it's part of, sort of maybe part of the certification, is the um. Well, maybe we'll wait till other business in the community match group. Did you want to, under other business?
Do that.
Okay. All right. So is there anything else under the planning committee that anybody has? All right, so Earth Day.
Um. Right, we are, I am well underway with trying to. With finding volunteers to help with specific categories for Earth Day planning. Um, it'll be on April twentieth. And um. Looking to have the first meeting to kind of toss ideas around very soon. I'm meeting with um, someone from Bethel High School to get some high school volunteers to help with. Maybe social media outreach and photo video capturing on the day. Um, and I've already reached out to a bunch of people for. Other areas of coordination, um. Like reaching out to local businesses and event logo flyer design. That's everything, um. Okay, any questions?
Oh, we're still a little early. I mean, but it it it'll creep up on us. Once February hits, then we really only have two months, right? Um.
Oh, I have a question. Um. What about the tree planting situation that Dan mentioned with the Key Club and?
I put that in the hands of um, Lou from Bethel Land Trust.
Oh.
So he, he said it's right in their real house and um, I think they'll be coordinating that. But I'll be in touch with them. I'm hoping to get someone uh, point of contact with Bethel Land Trust to work specifically one on one with Earth Day Coordination. Uh, Lou and J D are very busy, um, so hopefully they really have the bandwidth. So. Hopefully we get that person.
That planting would be on that day? Is that what they're, we're thinking or?
I'm not.
I don't know if there's a lot going.
That's what we have to talk about in our meeting, really. Um, I feel like maybe the celebration is its own day.
Yep.
And then everything else is on different days surrounding or the week after Earth Day, or you know, the weekend after Earth Day.
Yeah.
Um, like the the trashed town cleanup, um, all these other events that Bethel Land Trust did in the past, walking from preserve and things like that. Might be on different days. It might be too much to have on one day.
Okay. Okay, hopefully it can be uh, meant communicated leading up to it, like we're gonna continue. This whole journey of Earth Day the next week with the planting and the cleanup and.
Okay, that's the plan.
Yeah, all right. Think that. Anybody else have any other questions or comments? All right, so um, EV charging, um, Peter and I um, met. Um, I'll start a little bit, Peter, and then you can chime in. Yeah, all right. So we met and we we decided the best way to gather information um, to come up with. Destination for the selectmen, the first selectman, is to put out a request for information to um, uh, uh. Posting it and to different vendors around the state as all, and also on the state procurement site, working with the town um, on that. Um, and when you do a request for information, um, it's a way to get um, different perspectives. And information that you you're not really, there there's no cost to doing it. It's uh, it's a way to also vet out vendors that would not make sense or partnerships that would not make sense for the town. So um, we put that together and um. Dan has that now and he's looking it over and also we'll be talking to some members of his team, his internal team. About that and then he'll get back to us with some comments. So Peter, go ahead.
Okay, so um, thank you. As Catherine said, um, we completed. It's um, I believe uh, we've edited it, given it to Danny Carter. And there is no commitment with an R F I. Again, it's just a document that makes government smarter. Um, and um, we'll have to see what comes up, but it's probably gonna have a. Uh, thirty or sixty day turnaround. Um, and then all of the results will be presented. Um, uh, to the commission and then we'll make recommendations um, to the first selectman. And then he does what he does.
Exactly. Um, it's a great way for us to get a lot of different perspectives and information. About how we should approach the E V charging um, uh, plan uh, in general. Uh, where to put them, what type of equipment should we get? It should should be bi-directional. Uh, who is going, who does it impact, et cetera. So we're looking forward to.
How can we get it for free?
Yes. Yes, um. Are there any questions? We don't have it all together yet, but.
Right.
Fully soon, because Stan's looking at it now. But anyway, any questions? Any comments about this?
I do have a question.
Yeah.
So the E V charger that Bethel had for a while.
Has.
Has, right. Um, is there any way to continue that? Like, wasn't it just?
There is one.
There's one or two.
Yep, there um, by broken symmetry and then for some reason there are. Uh, two by the train station.
Right, and those are charge points. So way back.
They'll charge. I don't know the story behind. Behind them.
Yeah, that I I believe my understanding is they're they're charge points. Um, so way back when, when. Um, E V chargers came on the market like fifteen, twenty years ago, charged, I can't remember the exact date.
That long ago.
Yeah, well, it was quite a long time ago. The federal government gave out a whole bunch of grants and ChargePoint. Got grants and said they called ChargePoint E V chargers around the entire country. Like the whole country was charge point, but um, I didn't, obviously it was a long time ago, so it it there was, it was nowhere near. Mainstream, there was, there was no, there's a zero infrastructure. There were no E, like very little E Vs at all anywhere. Um, but they they were all over the place. This is a leftover, um, and so that's where they are right now. But if you look at how. The E V purchases have grown, not as fast as people would like it to. Probably because there's no infrastructure and there's issues with the equipment, so that there's a whole bunch that needs, a whole bunch of things that need to happen for it to. Mainstream, um, there needs to be some type of plan everywhere when this does happen. For people that live, for instance, um, in apartments and condos and um, or multi um, family homes. And once this gets to a certain tipping point, where do you put them? Right? So. The local government needs to be part of that um, initiative. Um, there are a lot of opportunities for partnerships, a ton for public-private partnerships. So that the cost, there's, there could, there could, there is not, there is, there might be. Uh, probability that it may not cost anything because of these partnerships and because there's so much grant funding out there, so.
But also up being self-sustaining if the town negotiates a little portion. Of the charging fees for the maintenance of the equipment.
Correct. So there's a lot of things that need to be thought out before any of this gets um, approved and installed and used. Um, so we're at the way, way, way beginning and that's where we're at. So. Anything else, Peter?
Uh, the only thing I would add is that um, the E V ownership in Bethel. Doesn't really justify charging infrastructure, but having one of the hottest restaurant scenes. In this part of the state means we've got a lot of folks coming in. And what's better while you're eating dinner, just to plug in and not have to worry when you're going home. So I think it will increase um, the tourism, um, because right now. If if I had an E V and I lived in Westport or wherever and came out to La Zing or something. Uh, I'd be looking for a charger and be pretty upset if there wasn't one.
You bring up a really good point. Um, some of my colleagues that I talk to in the in the commercial real estate business. I I tell them, when you build these or you're building uh, mul, mixed-use developments, you need to put E V chargers in. It's an amenity. It's a customer and. And you can charge for that. So, um, yeah, I agree with you on that. Are there any other comments, questions?
So just so I'm clear, but so the work that we're doing as this commission is really. Not making a recommendation for how to move forward so much as we're making. We're gathering information so that. The different options are presented as to how the town could approach this and. How they choose to do that, you know, is out of our purview, but we're really an informa, we're providing the information. We're collecting the data and um, and then it, you know, once that goes on. Then then the town will make their decision about how they want to proceed.
Correct, yes. Um, the first selectman um, asked the 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 commission to to help him with that information.
And I think that's a, that's a perfect use of the of the commission really is is, you know, our role isn't really. Um, to make decisions so much as it is to provide alternatives and information about um. What things are out there that help us to become more sustainable as a, as a town.
Yep, exactly.
Perfectly communicated. Thank you. Anybody else? No. Okay, so um, last is solar. Um, so there's a couple things going on with solar. Um, we were approached by um, well, there there actually have a few things. Um. The Pace Group um, met with myself and um, Sunny. Um, couple weeks ago related to um. I'm not gonna even say this correctly, but let me see if I can. Related to an initiative that, or not really initiative, there's already a regulation at the state level. Um, related to the capacity of solar and they want to increase it if we um, could um, help them in that way. Uh, we actually also met with um, Rahib Ali Brennan, who is um, our state rep. Legislature. He is on the Energy Committee and he's on the, he chairs the Subcommittee on Sustainability. And recently, see, I believe. And so Sunny and I met with him as well. And and we also talked about E V charging because there are several grants available related to both of these. And how do we expand our solar capacity with either solar solar canopies on. Um, parking lots like at the Bethel High School or the town to help um, decrease our energy. Usage um, at at it expand that to the to other border bed buildings as well as the as other um. at, at, expand that to the, to other board of ed buildings as well as the, as other, um, public buildings. And how do we help residents who would like to, um, put solar on their own homes? Um, so we talked about that with Rahib. And then most recently, we were appro, the, the first selectman was approached, and he asked me to talk to them. Um, a company called Posegen, and they work very closely with the Green Bank and investors. And they have a very interesting program that has been expanding in the state of Connecticut. Um, they have, I think, about twenty-five different communities that have, um, participated so far in the state of Connecticut. And they offer no cost and no credit, and they focus on middle-to-low-income residents that are, that would like to reduce their utility bill by putting solar on their, um, homes. And so they have a couple of programs through either, um, a lease. Um, or, um, if you, if somebody wants to pay upfront, there is a revenue stream or an income stream. Um, the goal for them, again, focused on middle-to-low-income residents, is a net savings. So, um, Dan is interested in, um, in participating. So we're going to start out with having them participate at the Earth Day event as a way to start to create that awareness, and then we'll see how it goes from there. There's no cost to the town at all. Um, it's a service that they provide to residents. It's all residential. There's no commercial.
Right.
Are there any questions about solar, energy?
That, that whole, that particular organization you spoke to about the middle-to-low-income solar benefits? They would still have to hook up with, like, EverSource.
Correct, and they do, yes, they do all of, they, they help a resident navigate that process. Because it can be, I think, as you know, because you have solar on your home, right? So you did it, you and your husband did it yourself.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, not ourselves, but.
Well, yeah, yeah, you know what I'm saying. You weren't up there going. Um, any questions about the solar? Okay, so other business?
So I spoke to Dan Carter about, I just wanted to inform him uh, about the Community Match Fund through Sustainable CT. So since Bethel is enrolled in, in the application process as a town, the town has, and different organizations in the town have access to this community uh, match fund where they have to crowdsource, and then the simple CT fund basically matches up to fifteen thousand dollars. And there are stipulations and criteria that they have to adhere to, and it has to be aligned with the sustainable categories and actions that Sustainable CT has. Um, so I explained all this to Dan so that he can let everybody know. One of the stipulations that's really important to note is that the funds cannot be used for operation costs, and they cannot be rolled into any existing sort of grant monies or operation money. So that, that is something that, um, people should be aware of. And from my understanding, it's very nuanced. It's very particular to each situation. So it's a matter of looking at the sustainable actions and categories and the existing efforts that different organizations in town or whoever can assess for themselves if it's something that they can take on. And then we would help support them through that process with Sustainable CT, because they're, they have to meet and go through it all and be approved and all of that. So it was great to inform him of that, and hopefully people take advantage.
Yeah, I think it's a great idea and a great opportunity for the town itself to, um, implement initiatives that are not tax-funded. Um, their crowdsourced or fundraised funded, but it would be, you know, managed by the town. So, and also through other partnerships. So I think it's a, a great way to engage the community and partner with other organizations. So thank you for that. Anybody have anything related to the Community Match Fund? Just one other thing, because I almost forgot, and I promise I mentioned it. The library got ahold of J D Hill from the Bethel Land Trust. They, he will be giving, um, a workshop on invasive plants. And I believe it's on February twenty, no, wait, I had it written down. Give me a second. Just want to let you know what it is. Oh, my gosh. So, in case you want to go, I wrote it down somewhere. Totally let everybody know. Of course. Um, yeah, don't know. It's, I don't remember if it's, um, I think it's February twenty-ninth. Um, yeah, I believe it's February twenty-ninth. So I believe he was looking for someone to, um, but just as a support and an advocate of, you know, communicating about invasive plants, how those could be detrimental to pollinator pathways, et cetera. Um, so anyway, I just wanted to mention that. Um, there'll be more information that we can share, and, and I'm sure the town will share in the library. Sure. Anybody have any other business? Okay. Our next meeting is Wednesday, February twenty-first, seven P M. In this great, I guess, the Delta Comfort, the Delta Comfort Room. Where, and we have four monitors here. Once you all come here, it's really great. Um, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second? All in favor? Aye. Okay, thank you, everybody. Thank you both for showing up. I hope you learned something.
It is February twenty-ninth.
It is.